Jared, are you on the bridge now?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey, here. Greg Strick?
Here.
Andre Spinelli?
Here.
Jared Gardner?
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn?
Here.
Radhika Krishna?
Here.
Jim Winchester?
Here.
Scott Pulis?
Here.
Jeff Rana's excused. Thank you. You have a quorum chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, second by Commissioner Strick. Any objection? Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Strick?
Yes, thank you. And in the matter on the consent agenda, Resolution 2020-009, related case 2021-00... Can't read that. 3-1. I was not present for the... that testimony, so will not be voting.
Thank you. Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosure.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Pulis?
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures either. Moving on to our next item of business, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Is there any opposition? Seeing no opposition in the chat and no opposition here in chambers, the consent agenda is approved. And just a question for staff. I don't need to do... oh, I will need to do the public hearing items. I am going to go ahead and read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the planning and zoning commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the planning and zoning commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Moving on to Agenda Item G1, Case 2021-0039. Staff, can we have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thede Tobish, Long Range Planning Division. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the Small Area Implementation Plan Ordinance, Case 2021-0039. And I'd like to start by putting it in context and background in terms of the comprehensive plan. So recall state statutes mandate that home rule entities adopt a comprehensive plan to accommodate growth and population projections. The Anchorage 2020 Plan replaced the 1982 Plan. It was a policy plan and did not include a land use map. The Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan in 2017 focused on growth projections and did include a land use plan map, as well as numerous implementation actions to achieve that map. It's pretty interesting to note that each comp plan revision over the years is tied to certain new conditions found in the Anchorage Bowl. So for instance, the 1982 Plan focused on environmental planning policies and parks as a focus. The 2020 Plan in 2001 focused on smart growth policies like transit-oriented development plans, town centers, commercial corridors, things like that. And the 2040 Land Use Plan in 2017 focused on redevelopment and infill, with the recognition during the process we had that most growth comes from redevelopment and infill projects instead of a greenfield building. So the plan includes directives to facilitate that growth. The Small Area Implementation Plan Ordinance is an essential action of the 2040 Land Use Plan to address that redevelopment and infill we spoke of. The Small Area Plans is an essential strategy number 11 in the plan and is directed in Action Item 2-11 in Chapter 3 of the 2040 Plan. So what is the Small Area Implementation Plan, or a SAE, and where did it come from? Small area planning first appeared in 2014 East Anchorage District Plan to address efficient mobile home park redevelopment projects and possibilities, mainly in the Muldoon area. Small area planning expanded and evolved as an implementation strategy in the 2040 Land Use Plan, as I said, when we realized that new growth will increasingly include larger-scale redevelopment actions on older parcels at more complicated and constrained sites. It was also necessary to inject public support, regulatory flexibility, and incentives into ordinances to address the market conditions. Some SAE examples around town that might help you visualize includes the Cook Inlet Housing Parcels centered around 36th Avenue and Spinnard Road, and some of the mobile home park redevelopment projects at the east end of Chugacway near Arctic Boulevard. The SAE is a new Title 21 planning tool to facilitate and guide redevelopment projects and significant land use changes in priority and catalyst areas of the bowl. Many SAE sites are included in the 2040 Land Use Plan's Growth and Change and Actions maps. The SAE is intended to allow more flexibility and efficient use of land, ensuring consistency with the comp plan. It does use incentives and design flexibility for compliance with the plan. A SAE ideally would focus on collaboration of landowners and MOA staff to achieve the goals. The SAE supplements current master planning items in Title 21 and Chapter 2103, for instance, institutional master plans, which right now address large campus features of institutionally-owned lands, for instance, UAA or APU. The SAE ordinance is organized like other entitlements and processes in Chapter 2103, for instance, rezonings, conditional use approvals. I'll give you a brief outline of the ordinance. Starts with the Purpose and Intent Section, which is a non-regulatory item. It includes goals and objectives and describes the intent of the ordinance, followed by Applicability Section, which focuses most SAE areas on parcels of five acres or more. There are some exceptions. You could go down to one acre. And the SAE ordinance is not addressed in Girdwood or Turning Arm or Chugac Eagle River at this time. It's followed by a Submittal Requirements Section, which includes 13 items required for each application of a small area plan. That section's followed by the Approval Process, which starts with a concept meeting, moves to a community meeting, a pre-app meeting, and finally to staff review and approval by either the Urban Design Commission or the Planning and Zoning Commission. In cases... in a SAE case, a SAE application that includes a rezoning action or/and/or deviations from code as provided in the ordinance, that application would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Otherwise, a straightforward SAE application would go to the Urban Design Commission. The approval process is followed by a section, a brand-new section for 2103, which is called Deviations from Certain Standards of Title 21. This is the new entitlement element, which includes flexibility and incentives and allows, for instance, for variances for 2103 as per 2103-240, and establishing alternative site design or lot standards, or deviations from the Design Criteria Manual. This section basically allows for a one-stop variance review and approval process. The deviations section is then followed by the Approval Criteria, which includes six items which must be substantially met per staff in the commission review and approval. This is followed by the Compliance Section, which is basically describes how the plans are to be finalized based on a consistency finding, how the plans are used, consistency finding by the planning director. The ordinance ends with a modification/termination criteria. For the process we followed, the ordinance was developed with an internal planning group, which included staff from planning, OECD, and legal. The process included several early public forums and workshops, a technical advisory group we worked with, an FCC, and two community council presentations later on in the process. We were relatively light public comment, probably because of the exposure that the plan ordinance had during the 2040 process. It had considerable public positive response, especially in the early stages during the 2040 Plan. Please see the Common Issue Response Table at the back of the packet, which highlights the public comment and our responses. Department recommends approval with staff amendments on Pages 3 and 4 of your packet. And please reference questions and staff responses from today's email from Commissioner Gardner, which I think you got midday. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'm going to go ahead and call on Commissioner Strick.
Thank you. One question I had that came up, you mentioned APU and UAA as an area that might be impacted by this change. Is that correct?
No, not exactly, Commissioner Strick. Right now, the current institutional master planning section of ordinance in Title 21 at 2103 applies to those sites. It can be used now. That ordinance exists now in code.
What I'm trying to determine is, a couple of years ago, we had a case before us for the extension of Braga Road that would go through to Providence, that would open up that area for development and so forth. Would this ordinance bypass that process that was used then? And would that process have a different process in the future with this ordinance in place?
As I see it, Commissioner Strick, this ordinance would not deal with that at all. That would either go through institutional master planning or a straightforward general plan process for the road.
Okay. Can you think of any other projects that we've had before us or before the city, say in the last few years, that would change the process? And give an example of where the process would be changed by the implementation of this ordinance?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but I can think of the Cook Inlet Housing Project, where they replatted and reconfigured their, what, five parcels on their campus. That was done through straight entitlements generally and through a development agreement process. This would help, would change that. This could be applied to that type of a project now.
And that specifically for their infill development?
Yes.
Want to be incorporated?
Correct.
But no other cases that you can recall or think of that this would have been a beneficial use to a developer in cases that we may have seen in the last year or two?
Nothing I can think of in the last year or two.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. I think this may be a follow-on to Commissioner Strick's line of questioning, but I'm wondering when, if ever, this Small Area Implementation Plan process would be required as opposed to an option that a developer might seek, so that they might, you know, access some of these variances?
Commissioner Krishna, that's a great question. At this point, we don't envision requiring a SAE through the code. We are working on a companion ordinance called a reinvestment focus area ordinance. It's also directed by the 2040 Plan. And one of the elements of that ordinance right now, as a draft, is to require a Small Area Implementation Plan, to essentially provide for the flexibility and the incentives in both ordinances.
So that would be areas more than five parcels or between one and five parcels that are within a reinvestment focus area might be required to go through a SAE process?
Correct.
Thank you.
I had a question about the term contiguous acres. And my question is more, is there... could there be a scenario in which only part of a parcel was part of a small implementation plan? Or will it always have to be the full parcel?
Chair, the plan didn't speak to that specifically. I'm not sure we delved into that level of detail to come up with a reasoning for that. It's possible, I guess, that they could.
I guess the only reason I'm asking is, in that, just kind of the definition of the term contiguous acres, it says the planning boundaries for a Small Area Implementation Plan shall include all parcels owned by or under control. So I was wondering kind of why there was a choice to make it contiguous acres as opposed to contiguous parcels?
I think we are trying to follow what's in the code now for contiguous.
Okay. Just as a follow-up to some of Commissioner Gardner's comments, as he mentioned wanting to add contiguous to B2, I would just say that it probably would need to be added to B4 as well, and B3. So it'd be a... I wasn't sure if I was going to use contiguous parcels or contiguous acres... Oh, sorry, it would need to be added just before. That it should be any single parcel or collection of parcels less than five contiguous acres but greater than one contiguous acres, just to make sure it's being consistent.
Absolutely.
I also had a question, or maybe it's a comment regarding the procedures on Page 8 and Page 9. To me, it just reads a little confusing. It starts with initiation, and it starts with a single or joint application, but then it goes into the next phase, which says that it has to be done before the application. And then you go back to 5, which again talks about the application. So I'm wondering if the initiation is actually the concept meeting and not the application? And it could just be that I am reading it a little different than intended, but in my mind, the timeline kind of goes back and forth a little bit because of how it's worded.
I think the idea, Chair, was that the initiation was truly that. It was truly the origin of the idea and the concept, working with municipality as necessary to start the process. And that would... it seemed like to us a logical start to lead into the concept meeting.
As a follow-up, then maybe if starting with initiation makes sense, rather than saying, starting it with a single or joint application, that it would be initiated by the owner or owners of several property or several property owners. It just seems to kind of mess up the timeline if you're saying that it's dealing first with an application, but the application doesn't actually start until four steps down the line.
I think that was actually intentional. I think number one, Section D1, does not necessarily mean that they would start with the actual application. Rather, it would be the initial concept outreach between the owners and the municipality.
All right. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner O'Quinn.
Mr. Tobish, so I just wanted to go back to a case we heard about two months ago. It was a rezone at Arctic and Benson, where we, I believe, in any case, there were two different zoning districts or zoning designations for, I think, three or four different parcels. It seems like it'd be something that'd be appropriate to use a SAE to redevelop. And if a developer were to come to the department and, you know, request to do a project, how are different zoning designations within, you know, a group of contiguous tracts dealt with? Would a B3 use be allowed on one of the residential parcels if it was swapped around? Or, you know, how does the... how would that be implemented under the SAE process?
Through the chair, so your example is a great one, and it's one that's sort of a poster child of the whole process. But basically, they couldn't swap zoning land uses within the zoning districts, per se. They have to follow the existing zoning. So one option is to rezone, if that's their interest. But the other option is to follow this through the ordinance, so the section, the deviations section, D... Sorry. Bear with me here. Section E could be used to allow for certain commercial uses, specifically B1A uses, in a residential zone. That's where the flexibility would come.
And so a follow-up to that would be, you know, if you have a residential, you know, residential tract, and they want a deviation, what prevents them from putting the commercial designation in place? And this was raised in some of the comments by one of the community councils, I believe. What prevents them from building out the commercial use and then never getting around to doing the residential on that residential parcel?
Through the chair, so in your example, you're talking about in a residential area, if they put in a commercial land use but did nothing else. That's your concern?
Right. Well, it's a concern about, you know, maybe it's a mixed-use development, and it's going to have, you know, a commercial ground use, ground floor use, and then above would be residential, but, you know, they never get around to building the second and third floor residential because it doesn't pay.
I think the example would be dealt with through the process, and that would be part of the findings and conditions of approval, is how we typically address that. In the past, it's been conditioning the occupancy finding through, before, in order to build the residential before or during the commercial, so that they're both done either at the same time or close with each other. That's the best way we've addressed it in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I was curious how, and maybe this isn't an issue in any significant way, but at the very end, when one of the Small Area Implementation Plans is terminated, I don't have a great sense of kind of what it means or looks like then for the properties going forward. But I guess at a very basic level, would any uses that were put into place through the deviation process, would those just be considered non-conforming uses that could be continued on any individual parcel, so long as that use is maintained?
Through the chair, I think I get your question. I think if, first of all, if the deviation use, let's call it that, as described in Section E, meets the conditions of Section E, and also meets the underlying zoning conditions in the comprehensive plan, then probably, yes, you're right.
Okay, thanks. I think that answers my question for the moment, so thank you.
Commissioner Pulis?
Regarding the question earlier from Commissioner O'Quinn, Approval Criteria F1 says it includes the no-net loss of residential capacity. Does that solve that issue, that if a commercial building moved in, they'd have to finish the development and not... there's no way they could get out of doing the residential part?
Through the chair, I think that does answer the question. It's more a question of surety, you know, that they actually follow through, you know, what's the mechanism there? And it sounds like withholding the certificate of occupancy would be one way to do that. Or is there any sort of bonding that you guys would be able to put in place to ensure that the construction is completed or that, you know, that... I mean, you know, the whole idea, I think, behind some of these rezones that we've done recently in areas that would be really appropriate for using a SAE would be to, you know, in conformance with the 2040 Plan, you know, provide for more dense housing developments. And so, you know, that's my concern, that this is a way to, you know, take a residential parcel, put a commercial use on it, never really follow through on your commitments to the residential zone that, you know, the parcel has. And it kind of bypasses the rezoning process and a bunch of other things. So I just want to make sure that this isn't a way that a developer could, you know, put a commercial use on a residential parcel, you know, short-circuiting that.
Yeah, through the chair, I clearly understand the concern. And I think between the conditions presented and the comp plan policies, as well as agreements with private development, once a project actually goes to permitting, addresses that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pulis, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, I got one more simple one, thank you. This is an optional process. Is that my understanding?
At this stage?
Yes. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Then what is the will of the body? Commissioner Gardner?
I'll go ahead and put a motion on the table. So in Case Number 2021-0039, Small Area Implementation Plan Ordinance, I would recommend approval of the public hearing draft Small Area Implementation Plan Ordinance with the recommendations and amendments included on Pages 3 and 4 of the staff packet.
Thank you.
And I think I have some proposed text amendments that I would, I guess, provide in a separate additional amendment.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Would you like to make your proposed text amendments now?
Sure.
Make a motion for your text amendments now?
Yeah. So I move to, I guess, amend the motion to include some text amendments, and those are hopefully comprehensive. First, on Pages, on Page 6 of the packet lines 36, 41, and 42, to include the word contiguous before the word acres or acre on those lines. Second would be on Page 7.
Jared, can you hold up real quick? It's before the numbers. And Commissioner Gardner, I was also wondering if before we move...
Yes, I think so. Well, it's a single parcel, I don't know if it's necessary, but sure.
And just checking with staff to see if they have that before we move on. I have an affirmative kinda, you are free to move on.
Okay. The Second Amendment would be on page seven, line 33, delete the word "and."
You can go ahead.
Next, on line eight, oh, I'm sorry, page eight, line two, delete the comma. Same page, page eight, line seven, delete "through," T-H-R-U, and replace it with "through," T-H-R-O-U-G-H.
All right.
And then I would also include in the motion a request for staff to identify everywhere in the proposed ordinance that uses the term petition area and replace it with planned area.
All right.
And then I would also include in the motion a request for staff to identify everywhere in the proposed ordinance that uses the term petition area and replace it with planned area. I think that's it.
Thank you. I feel like most of those are self-explanatory, but if you would like to speak to those, you are more than welcome to.
I don't feel the need to provide any comments for those.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak to the text amendments? Seeing no one wishing to speak to the text amendment, that was moved by Commissioner Gardner, is there a second? Did we have a second yet? Is there a second? Moved by Commissioner Gardner, second by Commissioner Strike. Sorry, I should have got a second before I asked for comments earlier, but I'm seeing that there are still no comments, and we will call for a vote. Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Polis?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion, that motion for the amendments passes. We are now back to our main motion as amended. Would anyone like to speak to the current motion on the floor? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I guess I would just say that the Small Area Implementation Plan is included as the strategy in the 2040 Land Use Plan, and this ordinance would implement action item number 211 in that 2040 plan. It looks like there was a significant amount of effort in working with the community to develop and revise this, which I think is reflected in that we didn't receive any public testimony today. And I just wanted to note as well that I appreciated the, what is it actually called? Kind of the question and answer, issue response included in the packet, which addressed, and I, to my mind, resolved the few issues that had been raised by the public included in the packet itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one wishing to speak, call for a vote. Mr. O'Quinn? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Spinelli, were you listening to speak?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how. Through the chair, I just wanted to say that I'll also be supporting the motion, and I wanted to thank Mr. Tobish for his work. This is his outgoing case, and I think we should thank him for that. Also, I guess I'll just add while I'm here, that I particularly like the deviations portion. I think that will allow us to approve projects that don't necessarily meet all the code but are things that we think we want to see move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli, and we can now call for a vote. Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Polis?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Tobish, it looks like you got your swan song here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Putting on record, that motion did pass. Moving on to case 2021-0052, can we hear the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Planning Department, in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department, is submitting this request to rezone 18 dedicated parks within the Anchorage Bowl to the appropriate Parks and Recreation PR District. This request is being brought forward to fulfill action item 8-4 from the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan. This rezoned request will provide uniform zoning protections for all dedicated municipal parks within the Anchorage Bowl. This is the first phase of this effort. Future rezoned requests for the remainder of dedicated parks within Anchorage will follow. And for the record, action item 8-4 reads as follows: Conduct housekeeping rezone of dedicated parks to PR District and some T-zone lands to PLI. And just a disclaimer, that a rezone of T-zone lands to PLI will require a separate analysis and will be conducted at a future date. The PR District is a new zoning district established through a rewrite of Title 21, and the objective of the PR District is to protect and mitigate the land use impacts to the municipality's dedicated parklands. The rezoned request only encompasses dedicated parks due to the purpose of the PR District and its intent that it only applies to municipal land dedicated as such by the Assembly. The purpose of the PR District, as stated in Title 21, is: The PR District is intended to include municipal lands dedicated by the Assembly as parks in accordance with Anchorage Municipal Code Title 25, Chapter 10, Subsection 080. There are currently numerous dedicated parks throughout the municipality that are located within a variety of zoning districts, which may include residential, commercial, or industrial These designations do not provide adequate land use protections for dedicated parks, and this conflict between the underlying zoning and the parks dedication may result in the establishment of uses within these parcels which were not intended. The uses allowed within the PR District are much more limited to prevent incompatible uses from being established. Additionally, there are unique dimensional, i.e. setbacks, lot coverage, building height, etc., and landscaping requirements, such as site perimeter, parking lot perimeter, and buffer landscaping for the PR District. These land use regulations will not only benefit dedicated parks, but may also benefit adjacent property owners. It's important to note, too, that this request was also heard before the Parks and Rec Commission, which did submit a resolution of support, that'd be REZO 2021-03, and that's on page three of the staff packet. The Parks and Green Belts within Anchorage support the growth and livability of neighborhoods and economic centers. They also provide Anchorage with a competitive advantage for attracting and retaining both residents and businesses. Providing uniform land use and zoning protections for all dedicated parks will further contribute to the longevity of our park system. The Planning Department and Parks and Recreation Department request support of the rezoned request from the Commission, and would be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yell. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and through the, through the chair. The adjacent property owners to this, does this change in any way have an impact to their current use or potential future use for these, once these lands are dedicated, will those adjacent property owners have restrictions on what they can do on their properties?
Through the chair, that's a great question. It will not affect what uses they can establish. The only effect it may have would be perhaps buffer landscaping instead of visual enhancement landscaping along any abutting property lines. Depending upon the zoning district, that's a budding, you know, say it's an industrial or commercial use. And also, it would only affect the placement of structures within the PR District. It wouldn't affect the placement of structures within the adjoining commercial, industrial, residential, what-have-you district that's a budding.
And one of the follow-up, and point of clarification, I guess where I was, I'm just trying to think of a scenario where a allowable use might be for a marijuana store, retail, some, some sort, but now all of a sudden, because this area now has been designated park, does that preclude that type of operation from being, because it's so close, because it's within certain feet, proximity feet to it, or having a liquor license, or a liquor store, or some other type of activity that might be precluded?
Through the chair, yeah, another good question. So for marijuana facilities specifically, in the Anchorage Bowl, a dedicated park is not a protected land use. Athletic fields are, but dedicated parks are not. In Chugiak Eagle River, dedicated parks are protected land use. However, the fact that the park is dedicated is a little different than it being a PR District. It has to be a dedicated park in order to be PR, but it can be a dedicated park and not be PR, if that makes sense.
And it does, but this ordinance, this movement here tonight is to move this into a PR realm, isn't that correct?
Through the chair, so this will apply to currently 18 dedicated parks within just the Anchorage Bowl.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
So just had a real quick question about kind of what kind of title due diligence you guys are going to do when you go to seek the rezones. I know some of the parks in Anchorage have been dedicated by individuals to the municipality, and they might have reversions in them if they don't get used a certain way. And, you know, if the property were to go back to an individual or an estate or something like that later and was then burdened by this new PR District, you know, we could have a weird situation where you have private land that's dedicated as a park, and then, you know, so what is the, are you guys going to do a fair amount of due diligence in that regard?
So through the chair, quite a bit of property research has already gone into this project up to this point. So a dedicated park is one that's been dedicated through an ordinance by the Assembly. So I'm not aware of in those ordinances if there's any revisionary clauses in there that it would revert back to, say, a commercial district, a residential district, if it wasn't a park. Those are dedicated parks until an AO, you know, an assembly ordinance changes it otherwise. So in which case, you know, perhaps maybe a land would be sold and, you know, there's 101 different ways that that situation could play out, but for this case, it would only apply to dedicated parks that have been dedicated via AO, not an assembly resolution, not any type of, say, Great Land Trust gave the municipality land and then they designated it as a park. This is only parks that are dedicated through an ordinance.
Okay, I think I was thinking like specific, like, I think even Town Square Park has, you know, in the deed to the municipality, there are restrictions on its use, and if the municipality uses it in a different way, it reverts back to, you know, the estate of the prior owner. I don't know if that's the specific scenario with Town Square Park, but, you know, something that, that's kind of, that occurred before the municipality, you know, dedicated it as a park through an ordinance, something that occurred in the title conveyance. So that's kind of what I was getting at, but it's probably a pretty remote concern, but just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have some absurd situation like that.
I'm going to jump in with a follow-up question, just because you mentioned the distinction between a designated park and a dedicated park. Is there any plans, and I can't remember off from the top of my head about the 2040 Plan, is there any plans with staff to try to work on moving some of those designated parks to be dedicated parks? And if so, just wondering if we, if we have a timeline on that, if that's something on our radar, just looking for general more information.
Yeah, through the chair, so that is an additional action item in the 2040 Land Use Plan to dedicate all designated parks within the, within the bowl. As far as the timeline, I do not know. Parks and Rec staff is aware, and they, they have the intent to move forward with that. However, this is the, the first phase of this process, just to get all these dedicated parks zoned accordingly. After that, we'll have a list of the undedicated parks within town, and we can move forward from that list.
And so just to kind of wrap it all together, my guess is that one of the reasons it's taking longer for the designated parks is because they might have some of the encumbrances Commissioner O'Quinn was talking about, whereas the dedicated parks do not have any such encumbrances.
Through the chair, that could, that could be correct.
All right. Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. This is just a bit of a process question, but I think this is, because this is kind of a cleanup item, I'm just wondering if, in the future, if new parks are dedicated by the Assembly, if there is going to be intent to do this rezon to PR concurrently with that or directly after, so that we don't have the same situation happen in a number of years into the future?
Yeah, through the chair, if, if the Planning Department is aware of a piece of property that is, you know, set to be dedicated as, as a new park, you know, we'd be more than happy to work with the Assembly to make sure that this process runs concurrently. However, you know, say, a piece of property falls in the municipality's hands, and the Assembly decides to take it upon themselves to dedicate it as a park without working with the Planning Department on that, they very well could dedicate a park without it being zoned PR. It's just a matter of, I guess, communication and making sure that everybody's working together on that, so.
Thank you.
Just checking, Commissioner Gardner, your request to speak was previous, right? You're not looking to speak right now?
That's correct, yes.
All right. And seeing no other questions on the floor, do we have any public comment?
We do, Madam Chair. Let me call them. Hi, is this Kathy Gleason?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony on case 2021-0052. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
I am representing Ternigan Community Council.
All righty, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please state your full name for the record, and you can begin.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Kathy Gleason. I'm currently serving as Ternigan Community Council Vice President slash Acting President, and our, our council had this on our April 1st, no foolin', agenda to discuss, and we did pass a motion with regard to the case number 2021-0052, and I will just read it verbatim, and then I will add a bit to it. So, quote, "Ternigan Community Council supports the municipality of Anchorage Planning Department's housekeeping effort to rezon all dedicated parks within the Anchorage Bowl to the Parks and Recreation PR District as per Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, action item number 8-4. That way, our support will already be on record for future ordinances that will cover parks and other areas of town as the rezon proposals are released." So that passed by a vote of 11 to 0, and we really appreciate this effort by the Planning Department to move forward with this important item. It may be called housekeeping, but actually, it's, it's pretty significant. And I, just to address what was, what was just spoken with regard to if a park is dedicated by the Parks Department, can there be something in place to concurrently rezon it to PR Parks District? And I think that's really important, and I think whatever- And I think that's really important, and I think whatever internal department, communication, and vehicle that can be put in place to ensure that, I think that would be great. Back in 1994, when Turnigan Community Council worked with the Parks Department and the other entities of the municipality to create Point Warrens Off Park on the other side of Airport Properties, the north-south runway, on municipal land, I thought concurrently it got rezoned as PLI dash P, which was at that time the current designation, but when I looked on the zoning map on the county website, it shows it as zoned as PR, or no, excuse me, PLI, excuse me, PLI, not PLIP. And so, I'll have to go back and dig out my paperwork. I thought for sure we had taken care of that clear back then. So, I think we do want to make sure that's done concurrently moving forward. I do have kind of a comment with regard to, is there an easy way for the public to find out which parks are dedicated park that are properly zoned, and which parks are dedicated park that, you know, the planning department will be moving forward through with batches? With regard to Turnigan specifically, again, I went to the zoning map on the website, and I found over twenty Turnigan parks, just twenty within our boundary, that don't have a PLI dash P zone to it. I'm not sure if every one of them are dedicated, so that's, it would be interesting for our council to look up just how many of those are dedicated, and then that would, you know, we'd definitely put on our list of moving forward at some point that those designated parks, make sure that we get those dedicated. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to support this proposed ordinance. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. I just want to say this is Danielle Bailey here, and I just want to acknowledge that I know you did a lot of work to get this on both the 2040 plan and then to get it to this stage, so I want to thank you for all your work on that.
That's very kind. Thank you. I'm glad that it's coming to fruition now.
And I don't see any other questions for the individual, so I just had a follow-up question for staff. I guess first I'll close the public hearing since we have no one else wishing to speak. As a follow-up question for staff, would it be possible for the staff to work with the FCC to help each community council know what parks are in their, community council boundary areas, and what they are labeled as, both zoning and both whether it's a designated or a dedicated park?
Through the chair, yes. The dedication of parks has sort of been done in kind of a piecemeal fashion throughout the years, so it's in a collection of ordinances. There's also, in doing our property research, you know, there's a misunderstanding that a park, if it was dedicated via plat, that it is a park. It's not technically a dedicated park under Anchorage Municipal Code, but it would be a dedicated park within that subdivision, which is a distinction between the two. But we do have sort of a master spreadsheet that we're working off of to sort of figure out exactly which parks are dedicated formally by Assembly action and which are just dedicated through some other means, whether that's a resolution, whether that's a plat, or whether it's some type of property conveyance. So, short answer is yes, we do have a way to communicate that to community councils. Long answer is that it just may take a little bit longer in order for us to get accurate information out there to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Yell. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you. And a follow-up to Commissioner Bailey's question. So, what I'm hearing is we can expect to see additional resolutions coming before this body as you clean up more of the parks and get them more, moving from the dedicated to rezoning. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. There's, I can't recall the exact number, but there's over 200 parks in Anchorage, and, you know, we just have eighteen in front of you tonight. So, we did this short number sort of as phase one to kind of gauge public support and public input, as well as the Commission's opinion on the matter, before we, you know, spent numerous staff hours researching the rest of all the parks within the Bowl. So, it's likely, we're not really sure, if the next phase will just cover everything, or if we're going to break it up into numerous other phases, but this is not the only request of this sort that'll go before the Commission.
So, along that line, as a follow-up, if I could vote, or if I could give my suggestion would be to break it up into these small sections as you have them coming forward. But one request I would have would be a more detailed page identifying that park, where it is in that specific community area. We had a single map, and trying to discern where the parks laid, lied between the subdivisions or the areas of town was difficult, and so if you could break those up into a section so that we have visibility, I'm not talking about an aerial view, but I'm just talking about a little better laid-out map so that we can pinpoint those park locations.
Through the chair, yeah, that can definitely be done.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr. Yell, I saw that you had a request to speak earlier. Were you able to clarify what you needed to, or would you like to provide additional commentary?
No, Madam Chair. I addressed the comments I was going to give earlier.
Thank you. Commissioner Pulis?
Yeah, one last quick question. Is it safe to assume these eighteen parks were selected because they met all the district's specific standards? You know, with football fields requiring L2 buffering and all that stuff, that's why they were presented first as the eighteen you guys wanted to move the first time on?
So, the eighteen dedicated parks are actually within, if you're familiar with the Parks' Master Plan, or, you know, what's commonly referred to as the Parks Plan, they're within the Central Parks District. We chose that because it has the least number of parks in it, and we thought it would be the easiest first phase to go through. So, it just simply comes down to how many parks were involved, not necessarily compliance with any type of district-specific standards, of which with the PR, it's, I don't believe there's any requirements through the district for landscaping that'd be more use-specific.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions here or on the chat, is there a motion? And for those of us here in person, there is a motion written out on our screens that would make it easier, so you don't have to come up with the language. Motion by Commissioner Pulis.
I'll speak to it. In the matter of case 21-0052, a request to rezone eighteen designated parks within the Anchorage Bowl to the Parks and Recreation District. I will make a motion to approve with no conditions of approval.
Moved by Commissioner Pulis, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Pulis?
I will speak to the motion. I intend to support this rezone because it is consistent with the specific action checklist item eight four of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, and two, it meets the objective of the PR District to protect and mitigate the land use impacts to municipal dedicated parklands.
Thank you. We had a clarification from staff that it is to rezone dedicated parks. That's what you moved, correct? Thank you. Commissioner Strike, are you in the queue from earlier? I would just like to thank staff for their work on this and for their continued work to address some of these issues that were in the 2040 land use plan. It's good to see progress being made on there. I would also like to thank staff in advance for accommodating Commissioner Strike's suggestion that we put in some better maps, so we have a better idea, and also thank you in advance for your continued work with the community councils. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Pulis?
Yes.
And Chair Bailey? Yes. Thank you. And that motion passes. And here's the test of the night. Is Commissioner Strike going to figure out the screen fast enough to move to adjourn? Ooh, Commissioner Pulis just beat him in. A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Pulis. And I believe we had a second by Commissioner Strike. We do have a second by Commissioner Strike. Is there any objection? All right, I'm just going to delay this a little bit and say that I want to thank everyone. It's fun to see everyone in person, and, yeah, Commissioner Gardner, you're really missing out over here. All right, we are adjourned.